Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School PDC Room. Remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded, and I call this meeting to order. We will start with introductions to my left.
Jeff Boe.
Dustian Puma.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Ternaral.
Ryan McMahon.
Rob Mullen.
Joe Musina, Business Administrator.
Nate Moreno, Student Representative.
Thank you. If I could ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for item 96, 2022 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 500. Citizens' time. See none. Correspondents. Dr. Flanagan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two items I want to bring your attention to tonight. The first one, I guess by definition, isn't necessarily correspondence, but it is out there publicly in terms of DESI and snow days right now. As you know, in the past year or two during COVID, DESI had extended the opportunity for districts to use remote learning opportunities in Lula snow days. That edict has since expired, so as such, going forward into the school year, if there's a potential for us to have a snow day, remote learning will not be an option. It will be a traditional snow day. So our elementary students can enjoy the magic of snow days, and our middle school kids and high school kids can sleep in and do whatever you do on your technology. So that'll be the plan for that going forward. So there'll be no remote learning day opportunities. The second one, the second item I want to talk to you about is a letter that did not make this backup, but two letters I sent this morning on behalf of the MASs, my Superintendent Association, to Senator Kennedy and Representative Gary, seeking additional state funding for any community that has a current project in the MSBA pipeline. As you know, we had our School Building Committee meeting, which we have one tomorrow night. There's some talk about overages, and we did have to value engineer some of the school building project at this time. Again, it's a placeholder based on an estimate at a point in time. However, some communities are really wrestling and struggling with this, so much so that they've had to go back to the community to seek additional funding, and in some cases, the project's been denied in at least two communities in the Commonwealth. So we are, the group is coming together through the inexorable cost of construction and seeking additional funding from MASs. So I sent a letter of support to that, which will be presented to the School Building Committee tomorrow night, but I wanted the committee to be aware of that. And that's all I have for correspondence at this time.
Excellent. And if I just could add on that, we are not one of those committees or communities who are looking to go back to our residents. School committees, or School Building Committee, as well as the administration and our partners are being very proactive in preventing us from having to do that.
Absolutely. And again, that's based on estimate at this point of time.
For the residents at home.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So, yeah. Personnel.
We have two new hires, Tyra Pelletier, TMS Power Professional, and Marika Johnson as a Tinsborough Elementary School Power Professional. And we did have one announcement of intent to retire, Ellen O'Neill. Ellen O'Neill, her kids, she's a community member, kids went to school there. She's been a SLP at TES for over 15 years, so it should be going in August of 2023, so.
Congratulations to her. Yes. Share the success.
Yeah, so TES is excited to welcome their families to the school on Thursday, September 29th, for an open house. The format will be a meet and greet with opportunities for students to show off their classrooms, work, and their school. The students will take the lead on this night. Yesterday, students and families were introduced to the elementary school's first annual TES Stripes Walkathon. This is a fun and healthy way to raise money for the students and staff of TES. They have teamed up with Get Movin' to make this event fun and profitable with online, mobile-friendly technology. The Walkathon is sponsored by the Tinsborough PTO, and all funds raised will help supplement the costs of school events and assemblies, Stripes' core values, materials to enhance their classrooms and staff appreciation. The Walkathon will take place on Friday, October 14th, and your participation and support are greatly appreciated. You'll hear a lot about the middle school later on tonight with a presentation from some great students, so nothing for TMS from me. At the high school, class officers have been elected and homecoming planning is underway. Class t-shirts have been ordered. Seniors decided on the homecoming theme, which this year is going to be Disney. And the class banners have arrived, and everything's getting ready to go for that. Many extracurricular activities have started or have upcoming meetings scheduled, including esports, course clubs, student council, adulting 101, biobuilders, chess club with strategic games, DECA GSA, and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Club, to name a few. College representative visits started this week with UMass Amherst, University of Maine, Middlesex Community College, UNH, UMass Boston, Macalester College, and Kobe Sawyer College, all visiting this week, with over 40 more colleges scheduled to visit THS this fall. Congratulations to September Students of the Month, Janelle Cody, June Hooley, Mesha Patel, and myself. School counselors have started meeting with seniors.
Well, you can't gloss over that.
I didn't want to make a big deal out of it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. School counselors have started meeting with seniors. The senior seminar is scheduled during Tiger Talk on Thursday, and Senior Information Night is scheduled for next Wednesday from 6:30 to 7:30. School pictures and open houses are scheduled for Thursday of this week. Open house will take place from 6:30 to 8:00. And all the principals would like to thank everyone for a great start to the year, and that is it for me.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I get a motion to take item 9A out of order, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 500.
Mr. Ternaral, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Pollitt's here tonight with half of the 7th grade, I think. Some very familiar faces. For those who don't know, I think a lot of these folks out here in the audience tonight were some of our tour guides last year when we were showing off the middle school and trying to convince this community that we needed a new school. So clearly, students have been involved and get involved in the school, and they were doing that last year, 6th graders, so we appreciate your efforts there. Nice job, ladies. We appreciate it. So Mr. Pollitt, I'll turn it over to you and your crew.
So I was dutifully prepared when there were 5th graders coming to 6th grade to be ready for this crew. But I will say that they have been nothing but fantastic since they've been here. They have ran the tours, like you said, were phenomenal members of the 6th grade class. And then this year, many of them showed up to open house. I'm not sure why they came with their parents, but they came, and they actually were a huge help to get parents around the building in an orderly fashion. So I figured it was, they were more than willing to do this, and they want to, they have a few things to let you know about, and certainly, if you have some questions at the end, you can ask them, or you can email me, and I'll make sure they respond to you at another time, too. So.
All right, ladies, there's all you. Now introduce themselves as we progress through this, please.
Thank you for all, all of you for coming this evening. This is one of the highlights of our year.
If we pull another chair up if we need to.
I did bribe them with pizza fryer.
Pull one more from the back.
Yep, pull one from the back there.
Perfect.
I want you to introduce yourselves first.
I'm Morgan Manning.
I'm Kristen DeShane.
I'm Sidney Vayasaklo.
I'm Kendall Sullivan.
I'm Emma LaCrosse.
I'm Brooke Ribido.
I'm Ella Perry.
So obviously, you're looking at the entering TMS sign, which has our core values, which they will refer to a few times through this presentation. Be some interesting connections they draw, too, which is awesome. So go ahead. Who's up first?
What do you got?
She did that. Here we go.
Transitioning to a new grade. We also, this year, from 5th grade to 6th grade, we have more responsibility. In 5th grade, we used to have to get walked around to the school, walked around the school, like to the bathroom, classes, lunch, and other things. This year, we have more independence, and we get to walk around without someone needing to come with us. Also, this year, through 6th to 7th, we have, we need to make sure that we know, like, keep in track of things like homework and et cetera, stuff like that.
Entering a new school can be hard sometimes because you don't know your way around the building. This makes for a great time to have 7th graders help 6th graders and new kids entering our school. Our school is a box, so if you're in the theater, there are three, four doors on the upper level, and it's sometimes confusing because you don't know which doors you're at because they all look the same. But you do have time in between classes to get to your class, of course. So having a smaller school is helpful at some points, but it can also make for a lot of traffic. That's pretty much it.
This is what a day looks like at TMS.
First advisory. Every morning, we go to our advisory classroom. It's a good transition from home to school, and it's a good way for students to ease into the school day. Some students even say it's the best part of their day. An advisory teacher is someone who can give you extra help on work and advise you about anything you need to know about the school or community.
Next are our main classes. Core classes are the main part of each student's day. In 7th grade math, we do lots of classwork, work together to solve problems, and learn new things. In ELA, we read and discuss fun and interesting books. We also learn about the different parts of the English language and work together on writing with good vocabulary. In social studies, we analyze life's history, different cultures, and civilizations. In science, we look at different experiments, vocabulary, and how our universe works through science.
Next UA. UA stands for Unified Arts. UA's offers something different for every student in the school. Whether you're artistic, like to sing, or interested in more hands-on stuff, like building and engineering, we have STEM. Interested in computers or science or in cameras and technology, we have media studies and computers. UA is a class that is not as stressful as main classes and a time you can enjoy and do what you like.
Next, we have lunch. Lunch is a time for us to talk to our friends and enjoy our meals. Although this is a free time, we do have some expectations. We always consider our core values like respect, perseverance, teamwork, and inclusion. We form two lines to get hot lunch. Our cafeteria has lots of tables, which you can spread out and sit with friends. We finish off lunch with a walk around TMS to let out energy and prepare to go back to class and learn.
Lastly, win. Win stands for what I need. Many students find this time very helpful for any homework, quiz, or test retakes, make up work, or any extra help from a teacher for a specific class. We also use this time to work on specific skills.
In Tinsborough Middle School, during class times, we are expected to be responsible for our own success. In class, students actively pay attention, students should actively pay attention and participate in classroom discussions. Students should be listening to what others have to say without talking over one another. They should add on to what others have to say or give constructive criticism instead of comments. TMS students are excellent at this. Students should always be following core values such as collaboration, independence, originality, perseverance, respect, and responsibility. In most classes, anything we do not finish is required to be finished at home. Students are expected to finish worksheets or different assignments, such as iXL or Alex, on time. Our classrooms assign in-school worksheets or other assignments to complete within the 55 minutes of our class. Group assignments are frequent within projects at TMS. If we are able to choose our own groups, we are expected to choose people who will benefit our learning experience, and if no work gets done, we must make it up. Everyone in our group assignments must have some piece of work to do. In our classes, no one is allowed to not participate in the work that they should be doing.
When transferring into middle school, students will have opportunities to participate in after-school clubs and sports. The sports teams we offer include basketball, softball, and baseball, football, lacrosse, soccer, field hockey, track, and cross country. Most sports, depending on our coaches' schedule, hold practice at least three to four days a week. Games are home and away with a bus that will take the team to and from any away game. A parent or guardian may take a player home with approval from a coach.
Student council is the perfect way to get involved in school activities and help with fundraising for the school. Some of the student council activities are school spirit weeks, movie night, the winter festival, the blanket drive, dodgeball and basketball tournaments, concessions, field day, and more.
Joining an after-school club can improve students' skills in any subject. Academic club is a great way to ask for any extra help on any school assignments a student may not fully understand. Our theater program is an award-winning act, and chorus club is also an option for students who prefer to sing more. If a student is more into programming and computer-based projects, robotics or coding club is a great way to express a student's talents. TMS has just established an esports club for, last year, for any students who enjoy online gaming. Teams compete against other schools in games like Mario Kart, Rocket League, and others. Late bus can provide transportation during after-school hours. All after-school activities are available to 7th and 8th grade students. Some activities require an older age to participate. Sports also require a renewed physical to participate as well. Lots of students like to get involved, to hang out with friends, and even to have the opportunity to create their own clubs.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for your presentation. It was awesome. I always tell every class that comes in front of us that it takes a lot to come up and sit here and make a presentation in front of adults and TV, and it's very nerve-wracking, but you guys did a great job tonight. So I'm going to open it up to the rest of the committee, if you have any comments or questions.
What's your favorite classes?
Okay, I'll start. For me, science.
For me, science or math.
I like science as well.
I like science and need to find arts.
My favorite subject would probably either be science or English language arts. My favorite subject is probably ELA.
My favorite subject is science or math.
My favorite subject was gym and lunch.
You still failed both.
I still.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you a question. So you guys did, it was a great job in terms of providing a commercial for TMS and what TMS is. How did this year, how's this year feel different for you? What do you love about school right now? What are things we can work on? Do you have those conversations? Tell me personally how school's going for you.
Personally, for me, school's going well, but like, you also learn how they're going to, like, make their tests. So sometimes, when you take your first test, you might, like, not do great. Like, I didn't do great on my first ELA test. But like, it's just a learning opportunity because you're not always going to get the same material and stuff.
Right. I love that learning opportunity. Great.
For me, the 7th, for me this year, the teachers are great. They're, if you ever need help, they're always there to help you out if you need something. And it can be a little nerve-wracking sometimes because, like we said, there's more responsibility on homework, studying for tests, and stuff like that.
For me, 7th grade is going pretty well. It can be stressful just when, like, you're talking about how your quizzes and your tests are going to go, but other than that, I would say it's going really well.
Awesome.
The transition from 6th grade to 7th grade is definitely a big jump because there's a lot more things you have to be responsible for, and I think it's definitely good for a lot of students to develop as they go.
For me, 7th grade definitely differs from 6th grade because there's a lot, as Kendall said, there's a lot more responsibility and more things that you have to attend to and be better about. But the teachers this year are phenomenal, and I am overall happy with how these years are going. For me, 7th grade's going really well. We have great teachers that will help you with anything you need. It's definitely different from 6th grade, just like work-wise and how much you have to keep track of, but I think it's going really well.
7th grade is going really well. It was a big jump from 6th to 7th grade. There's a lot more responsibility and a lot more work you have to keep track of, but yeah, it's.
But you're managing it.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great.
Awesome. Well, Mr. Pollitt, thank you very much for bringing these group of ladies in to present to us this evening. We really appreciate it. Like I said, when you guys sat down, the three nights that the three schools come and present are probably our favorite three nights of what we do all year. So we really appreciate you guys coming out and doing that for us. Thank you.
And just to add, before you leave, one second. Nate commented that he remembers being in 7th or 8th grade presenting about the core values at TMS. So maybe in four or five years, we'll see one of you up here at this table. Who knows? So great job tonight. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number seven, subcommittees. We have none at this time. Unfinished business. Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll jump right into the slide deck. So we'll go to the first slide. The True North statement, we're going to come back to that. I think we, I think we heard it loud and clear tonight at this table. I think we heard a lot of people talking about the investment that other teachers make, that the teachers are making in these students and how they feel connected to these teachers. That's, again, what we are about. Value our people and our school and work to get better. And certainly, it is all about the people. One of the things that we talked about, we will introduce to you, I believe it's October 4th or the October 18th meeting, we'll see that in a second. We are going to do Strategy for District Improvement in Action update for this committee. So you will see actually where our strategic objectives are coming alive in the classroom, where some of our key actions, strategic priorities, are coming alive in the classroom. So Mr. Woodlock and I are working on this, and this will be something that you can see to truly show the community that our strategy of district improvement isn't a document that just sits. It is reflected in everything that our teachers do every single day. So that update will be coming to you at some point down the line. We'll go to the next slide. Thank you, Mr. McMahon, for this recommendation. We'll talk about upcoming meetings next before we laugh off at the end. As you know, we have a School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night. Our next school committee meeting is on October 4th. The elementary school, we're here to present. Then October 18th, Derek Piper will come with the technology team, or a few members of the technology team, to present to the school committee, and at that point, we'll introduce our first SDI in action update. And then we'll have our Student Services presentation on November 1st. TMS Building Project Update. So last week, designers from JCJ came, and they met with just about every staff member in central office, as well as the entire middle school, to talk about where we are in terms of the detailed design. Again, it's one thing to have schematic design, C-boxes and things like that. Now it's going to the next level in terms of the detailed design. So they spent two whole days in district, meeting with our teams, meeting with our teachers, meeting with our custodian, our cafeteria workers, everyone, to kind of find out, what do you need? Do we have everything built into this plan according to what we heard from you months ago? And that was a very productive meeting. They'll present the details of that, the update of that tomorrow night to the School Building Committee. So tune into that if you can. Right now, I know that Fontaine, JCJ, and Leftfield are working on developing that permitting approval schedule. I believe there'll be some kind of high-level update tomorrow night to the School Building Committee in terms of where that will go. One of the things that we will talk about, we did originally meet with Chief Russell and Chief Howe to talk about the initial design of the school before schematic design. Now, again, we're going to do the same thing with our, with our first responders and really talk about, okay, here's what the design looks like. We're really starting to dial this in. Does this meet everything that both the fire and police chief would want to see in the design of a school? So that meeting is upcoming. And the other, the piece I told you about earlier was the communication to the state legislators to see if we could potentially get more funding for this project. The other component that's on here, now that the old central office is evacuated at this point, and we're all over here, first responders have requested to potentially do some training in that facility. So we're going to work with the police and fire to use that. They can do their drills in there. We're going to ask them that they don't do it during the school day. We don't want it to be a disruption of the learning environment. But we're going to work with that as a community effort and certainly do anything we can to help support our police and fire departments. And that's all we have for Building Project Update at this time.
If I could just add one thing.
Sure.
The School Building Committee meets every two weeks or once a month, depending on where, what stage we are here. But I'd like to thank Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, and your staff, because the work that goes on behind the scenes that we don't see are countless hours of meetings and bringing everybody, all the teams, together to create the building that we need. So I'd just like to thank you and your staff for all the time that you put into this project.
Appreciate it. So now we'll get into our TTR update. Mr. Woodlock.
Thank you. So this week, we're looking to focus on another one of our strategic initiatives for the district, which is, you know, something that came up in one of my first meetings here, was, you know, allocating additional budget monies for social, emotional learning and addressing the needs for that in our buildings and taking care of our, again, taking care of our people first, making sure our students are in a good place and providing them with assistance when necessary. So Ms. Lewensik and I are meeting with building administrators in each building once a month, and this is one of the topics that we are talking about, is how are we meeting this particular item, as well as other items contained in our SDI. So this month, we focused on SEL, and I asked the building administrators to share with me some of what they're doing in helping to meet the district initiatives in this particular area. And so what you're going to see on each of these slides is, the first thing is focused staff meetings and professional development on MTSS and UDL. That is across the board for all of our buildings. It's very calibrated in that sense. And when we talk about MTSS last time, and we talk about universal design for learning, those two things that we're focusing on and beginning to, you know, conduct professional development with, with our staff, both have a really strong SEL component. And so that's one of the important reasons why we're moving in that direction. But if we focus first on the elementary school, some of the things that were shared were that counselors are conducting lessons in homeroom, K through 5, and those include things like Second Step, mindfulness mind-up curriculum, social thinking curriculum, and focusing on what it means to have a growth mindset. We're trying to train our young, our young people to understand, you know, they are maybe struggling, but that means they're just working towards a goal, not that they've failed. Failure is one step towards success. Dedicated morning meeting and community building time built into the master schedule. I can tell you just walking around the elementary school that this is happening in every single classroom that we went in. Small social skills groups and collaboration with outside mental health providers like William James for students that need kind of a tier-three support. There are about 50 other items on the elementary school's list, but for tonight's meeting, I condensed them to just five. If we look at our middle school, again, you see the focused staff meetings and professional development on MTSS and UDL, but I think some of these were touched upon with our students and Mr. Pollitt this evening. The advisory is up and running, and that's a really great opportunity for having, having an additional teacher outside of the scheduled teacher to make connections with kids. That's the purpose of advisory, make connections with kids. And so there's SEL work that goes on there, but there's also a lot of fun activities and just something to make kids relax and enjoy their day. Again, like the elementary school, Second Step programming has begun during wind blocks for all students, and the focus this year is on mindfulness, social, emotional well-being, and preparation for the school year. You're going to see a lot of similarities as I go through. One thing we've asked teachers to do is, SEL isn't something that counselors or administrators are responsible solely. We're asking all teachers to make that a part of what they do and to incorporate social and emotional opportunities within lessons. And that can be really simple in just trying to make connections, get to know kids better, so that when something arises, a problem or a concern, there's a connection there and a relationship. Relationships are one of the key components to effectively teaching students and managing students when they're going through tough times. Our school social worker has started meeting with small groups and individuals who are at risk, and those are being identified as we go through the school year. And again, school counselors are forming social groupings to support social development for students that may struggle in that area. Moving on to the high school, again, not to be overly repetitive, but focused staff meetings and professional development on MTSS. meetings and professional development on MTSS and UDL. Continue work, as Mr. Ogden and Ms. Trainer talked about at our last meeting, to develop that wind block. That exists at the, at the other schools, but not at the high school yet. And it's really important to have that wind block, not only to get kids what they need in terms of academics, but also social-emotional opportunities within that time. School councils and social workers are offering two grade-based dialect behavioral groups in trimester one, and they're planning on doing more in trimester two. And those are gonna focus on, you know, dealing with things like anxiety and creating coping skills. How do you deal with, you know, tough situations and giving coping skills to students who may need those? And honestly, we all need those, so that's good practice regardless. The school social worker is again, like in the middle school, meeting with small groups of individuals who may be considered at risk. And classroom teachers are working to implement SEL into their daily lessons and activities. Does anyone have any questions with regards to these slides?
Are teachers being supplied the SELX strategies or are they being asked to lesson plan on their own for those?
So what will be happening is we will be providing additional professional development on this. So we've given some basic understanding of what, you know, what's, what a simple SEL activity to do, which is just making connections with kids and building time into lessons for those purposes. And so we've asked them to just try those things out and with the promise that we will provide more specific professional development at a later date.
So are teachers expected to do additional planning or is it?
Teachers are expected to do what they feel comfortable doing at this point. So it really is not an expectation as an invitation to try out these skills.
So it's not a change of working conditions?
No. No, one thing we've talked about with SEL and, you know, with teaching, and you know as much as anyone else, teaching evolves, just like any other profession. And, you know, maybe 20 years ago, maybe five years ago, we could've said, well, it's not our job to make connections with kids. Our job is to teach kids. We have standards. This is what we do. But our True North doesn't reflect that. We focus on the individuals first and then we focus on growth. Without taking care of the individual, growth is very unlikely. So we really wanna, you know, have our teachers have that be a priority within their classrooms is let's make connections with kids. Let's talk to kids. Obviously, we have a job to do here academically, but we focus on academics, we focus on behavior, we focus on social-emotional learning. Those are all key components of what we're doing as a district going forward. So we will always try and support our teachers if they're struggling in this area. But that will be an expectation, and that is quite frankly, an expectation of teaching in 2022 and beyond.
I'm just curious because with so many new staff, some of the newer teachers might not have the strategies that some of the more veteran teachers do.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so that's where, if we are as a district, providing the teachers with suggestions, tips, strategies, professional development.
Ironically, what we're finding when we talk to our new teachers, when we interview new teachers is this is a component in teacher education today.
So even the teacher schools are changing.
Where it wasn't when a lot of us became teachers, you know? So we've had to kind of learn on the fly. And a lot of the teachers coming in now, when we talk about universal design for learning or MTSS or social-emotional learning, a lot of them say, well, I've taken a class on that or I've taken several classes on that. So, you know, in kind of a turnaround, some of our younger teachers have the expertise that some of our older teachers may need.
Awesome. No, that's awesome.
It's kind of a wonderful turn of events there where our veteran teachers can learn from our new teachers and vice versa.
Was there a response been from the staff?
Very cooperative, you know, not at all like pushing back on this. I think as much as anything else, teachers today realize like, you know, we need to, we need to do more in this respect because the kids need it. And so our job is to provide them what they need to be able to meet the standards. And if that means we need to focus more time on social-emotional learning, coping skills, you know, organizational skills, those types of things to, so that they can relax a little bit more, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, this is a result of feedback that we received from the staff and feedback that we've heard loud and clear over the past two years. You know, I don't think it's any different in the past 30 years. You can't teach a kid in front of you that you can't make a connection with. They're gonna shut down. They're not gonna listen. So making connections with kids, that's just good teaching no matter what. And that has been for 30 years. If kids connect with you and they can respect you and they enjoy you and they come to your class, they're gonna be open and receptive to learning. That's what we're talking about. Are they prepared to learn before they can actually deliver instructions? So our kids are there, and I think our staff has made it loud and clear that, you know, that I think they're appreciative that we've added some of the positions we've added with a social-emotional focus over the past year.
I think it's great. I think it's just a continuation of what we've done as a district for years, which is every identify what the current needs are. We have the long-term vision, but we also have the short-term, what are the needs of today? And I think this builds, you know, on that.
We need to adjust exactly on the fly.
I think the wind block is really good. I think that's a great addition because it gives the kids what they need in the course of the day to just satisfy whatever need they need. If that makes sense.
No, it does. And I think Mrs. Trainer explained it really well last week. I mean, there may be academic needs, and that'll be a core component of the wind block. But sometimes some kids need something else, and that could be just to get in the gym and shoot hoops. It could be to go outside and, you know, shoot rockets or whatever with Mr. Bovier or whatever. So it's identifying, you know, what students need and hopefully providing them some opportunities for choice within that wind block as well.
Just in my experience, the faculty at the high school is amazing for always reaching out and helping the kids and giving them what they need. Not that the other schools, I'm just.
No, I would agree.
That's where my.
I agree.
That's where mine's at.
Thank you, Mr. Woodlock.
Alright.
Do one more slide.
Oh.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update. One of the first things I was tasked with when I started in July was, you know, we want to make sure that coming out of COVID, you know, where things were very different and, you know, some of the things that were a high focal point, you know, that we focused on our response procedures. And so we have liaisons at each school now, in addition to myself, who are meeting with chiefs and deputy chiefs in the fire and police department. We've already had two meetings and we have another meeting scheduled for October. But we really want to kind of do a self-assessment on what we're doing and evaluate how we're doing it. And so the agenda items that we've talked about is again, that self-assessment and looking, how can we identify with other schools in town? You know, a lot, sometimes schools use platforms in which the police and the fire department have access to the schematics of the building as well as other security items that we don't talk about in public. But seeing if we can partner with other schools to make sure that we're all on the same one, if that's feasible. Because that would make things a lot easier for the fire department and the police department that they don't have to learn multiple platforms. And certainly if there is an emergency situation, we want them as familiar with everything as possible. So we've made sure that they know that they are welcome in these schools anytime they want to come in and, you know, tour the building, make sure that they're familiar with the buildings. And we're gonna be looking again at what we can do to better fund these, through possibly through grants, and just make sure that these are our number one priority is student safety. So we have to make sure that, that collaboration and that communication between first responders and the schools is a priority for us.
Dr. Flanagan, we have the schools come in, we have Mr. Piper come in, we have the councils come in. I don't remember the student, school resource officers coming in very often to give us an update on how they're doing.
Sure. You know, I think that's actually a good idea this year. Last year, as you know, we shared and it was on a rotating basis. This year, we have Officer Bonza full-time in the Tinsborough Public Schools. So I'm happy to have Bethany come in and, you know, certainly maybe we can invite Deputy Chief Woods, who's kind of acting as liaison, or Lieutenant Casella to come in as well. Absolutely.
I'd be very interested in hearing from him.
Yeah.
And Chief Russell for that matter, because we've been working really closely with the fire department.
Sure. So we'll coordinate that. Yep, we'll make that happen.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. We can move on to.
9B.
9B.
Mr. Chair, as the committee, if the committee doesn't recall, let me refresh your memory. When we settled our collective bargaining agreement with the TTA in July of 2021, in that agreement, we had a joint labor management committee language agreed upon by both sides that would be specifically looking at bumping rights within the district. For those of you who aren't aware, for those who are at home, the language that we had in the contract was certainly dated. It didn't reflect our current assignment of staff, and it really didn't reflect educator license accurately. So what we did was I met this summer several times with Shelby Govan, the president of the TTA, and Jason Lewis, the vice president of TTA. And we sat down and we essentially blew the entire language up, and we came up with language for bumping purposes in the event of budget cuts or whatever that made sense to both sides and we agreed upon. And we brought that language, they brought that language to their full body on the first day of school, presented it to the body, and it passed by a 140 to 2 vote on the teacher's side. So I think that's reflective of the work that we did and the understanding that we have. So now both the administration and the union have an understanding of the language. We're in agreement with what it says. We have looked at just about every scenario possible, and we agreed to sit down and kind of rework it if we have to. But the language that we've included into your drive tonight is the language that we came up with, which we think is certainly better language that goes in the contract, and I'm seeking the committee's support on that tonight. I know it was one of those things that you said, I think Ryan, you were the chair of the negotiating team at the time, you said, Mike, just do this.
Yeah.
Because operationally, I understood it. So we had the language. It took us a while to get there because of a couple of other things that got in the way the past two years, but we finally got it there.
Excellent. So I will entertain a motion to approve the amended language to the.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So on the last line, it says, on such occasion, the 15-minute limit does not apply. What does that mean? On the ending, it says supervision of students. It's listing all the duties that a teacher might have to do, and then the 15-minute does not apply. Does that mean if it stands beyond? That's not the language? Am I in the wrong spot?
Nope, you're in the right spot, but that's not specific to bumping. That's just a specific to school bills. The only thing we changed in that language, there was no language change there. The only time we changed there was the start time at T E S.
Oh, okay.
All of that language was there.
Alright, okay. Then that's my question. Good, I'm good.
Then I will entertain a motion to approve the amended language to the Unit A contract as presented by Dr. Flanagan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 5-0-0. Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. And then we move on to finance. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Tenarello, for signing of bills tonight. Seven bill warrants were presented to the committee. I do have them all back approved. The list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts is in your drive. And for signing of payroll, the last two payrolls since we last noted payroll, payroll date of August 29th, and the payroll date of September 12th, which was the first payroll for all staff for this school year, warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in the drive as well. And that is it tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Messina. Welcome. School committee discussion.
So, not a whole lot, I just want to say though, thank you to our middle school, middle school students for coming out tonight and doing their presentation. As always, you know, we've talked about how great it is when they do come out. I'm looking forward to T E S coming next. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I just want to comment how impressed I was with the students. Their poise, their presentation skills, how they used appropriate language, and they were so articulate, and they were just great kids. It was awesome to see them. It is so awesome. It's so great when they come. And I hope everyone's having a great back-to-school fall. That's it.
I would echo that. Very thorough presentation. They did an excellent job, so lots to be proud of there.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'd also like to add in, yes, thank you very much to the young ladies this evening. Always impressed with the groups to come here and make presentations. It is, as you said, it is a very difficult room to present in, and they're always up to the task though. And, which is getting, my second point, which is getting to be far too frequently lately, I would like to thank very much Mrs. O'Neal for her many years here in Tinsborough, particularly at the elementary school. She's done a wonderful job with the kids there, including with my own. And I want to thank her very much for all of her hard work with the kids and congratulate her and wish her the best of luck.
Congratulations, Nate, student of the month.
Thank you.
Very proud of you. Good job. Again, you know, thank you to the TMS students. As an engineer, my favorite part of the night was hearing how many of them love science as their favorite subject. I was not expecting that, so I don't know who the science teacher is, but, you know, great job.
Kudos to them.
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations, Nate.
Thanks.
I know it was embarrassing you to say that, but that was a good job.
No, it wasn't that bad.
I just want to thank all of our staff. I think, you know, the first couple of weeks of schools tend to be working the, working the kinks out, making sure everything's operating smoothly. I think, you know, we have the best intended plans come June, July, August, and then something happens come September, and we're trying to figure it out. And I think all the, I think all the snafus hopefully have been hiding out at this point. But, you know, I appreciate the flexibility of the staff. Everyone knows that starting a new school year, there are some obstacles, and they've done a great job. They've been flexible. And most importantly, they put the priorities of our kids before everything else, and they're advocating for the kids, and they're advocating to do what's right. So thank you to all the employees of Tinsborough Public Schools for really making this, this beginning of the school year as smooth as possible. I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. I too. Congratulations, Nate.
Thank you.
Student of the month. That's awesome. Again, thank you to our seventh graders that came in this evening and presented. And one thing that when asked what their favorite subject was, as they went through that, they also discussed how cooperative their teachers have been and how helpful they've been through every step of the way. And each one of those young ladies mentioned their teachers. So I think that needs to be mentioned, and thank you to our staff for always being there for our students. We do not have a need for executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 5-0-0. Thank you very much.